January 27, 2022, the time is 9:00 a.m. This is a meeting to conduct deliberations among the Board of County Commissioners. And this is our regular, typically Thursday morning, community development meeting, attending our Commissioners Duncan and Filios. Bill, are you on?
I'm on.
Okay, so Commissioner Bill Brooks is joining us as well. All three of us are here. Ben, would you please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, then. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none? Any, I don't have any opening remarks, any potential conflicts of interest? Hearing none, so?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're ready to proceed with deliberations. Director Callahan, is there anything you wanted to instruct us before we proceed?
No, sir. You referred all of the testimony. You have everything you need from the report. Now you're really down to it.
Okay, so this is what we refer to as a de novo hearing, so we're hearing it on, is it fair to say, on appeal? Or it's a rehearing? We did hear it on appeal.
De novo is done and closed. You're in deliberations.
We're in deliberations, that is correct. So any motion that is made addresses the case by APP 21-0002. So an approval or a denial is an approval on the de novo, and a denial, obviously, would uphold the original decision made by the?
Yes.
By you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got it. Okay. All right, so deliberations, that's just the three of us. And off we go. Who would like to go first? Bill, do you want to go first?
Sure. I honestly don't see any reason to change this ruling myself. I've looked at it, and it looks just fine to me.
Okay, I'm not sure I've, when you say it looks just fine, are you voting?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you're saying you're willing to uphold the decision of Director Callahan?
Yes, yes.
That the proposed subdivision go forward?
Yes.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Leslie, do you want to?
Sure, I mean, there was a lot of evidence presented. I did feel like the applicant, not appellant, but the applicant had presented sufficient evidence to meet the requirement that is necessary for the subdivision, for the minor subdivision to go through. There's still another hoop to jump through with individual building permits and well permits and all those kind of regulations that the developer will still have to meet. So at this point, I would be in favor of denying the appeal and upholding the decision to allow the subdivision to go forward.
Okay. So it's my turn. I guess I get to dissent. And I'll go through my reasoning. I thought the testimony given by the hydrologist, or geohydrologist, was very, very, fairly compelling, and especially as he alluded to the technology brought about by the EMS system, which, incidentally, tends to be a snapshot in time as to the vein and its productive capacity. What is interesting is when I look at the case as presented by the attorneys for the original, for the applicant, if you will, the property owner, what is interesting is when I look at page three, it says, "It is likely that wells constructed on each lot will be capable of producing 1,500, excuse me, 1,500 gallons per day with a minimum flow of five gallons per minute for four hours, but only drilling and pump testing of a well or wells can confirm the actual amount of available groundwater." And what's interesting is, once again, that brings us to a snapshot in time, because the well may have a productive capacity when the test is run, but it doesn't take into consideration the historical aspect of the wells in the area. And what we've heard over and over again is the diminishing productivity of the wells in that area, and more specifically, there were property owners that had to re-drill. So when we take a snapshot in time, and there is a productive threshold that is met, it may be met at that point in time, and it may be met, but the fact of the matter is it doesn't consider the historical aspect of the wells that are already diminishing in their productive capabilities. That was my point. The EMS technology is rather incredible, because it does presumably use satellite technology, but it's pinpointing a vein, it's a point in time, it says nothing about the future capacity. The other thing that I have a concern with is that while the ordinance specifies, as I just read, what the productive capacity of the well needs to be, or how it passes a particular threshold, it doesn't really, once again, take into consideration the historical aspect, and in this case, and it's not just Cougar Gulch, there are Mica Flats, for example, which is also in that general area, have both long been known to have issues with water, with well water, with the productive capacity. So it doesn't take into account the historical aspect. I'll go one step further here. If I go to page four, it says, "The ranch," I'm looking, I'll just read it, it's very brief, "The ranch has shown a likelihood of sufficient water, and the county has imposed adequate safeguards to ensure no negative impact on the neighbors through its condition of approval. This is all the code requires." That may be true. I don't know when the code was written, I don't believe the code anticipates the level of growth that we have, and once again, the code fails to take into consideration the already reduced productive capabilities of the wells in the area. I'll go one step further, and let's see, I think I have one more thing, okay. When you look at the well logs that are produced, they go back, almost as far back as 2009, and the most recent well measurement that was taken, I think there was that mishap where the well was estimated to be something less, but was actually somewhere around 1,155 feet. And when you look at the trend in the productive capability of these wells, it diminishes over time. And so I'll leave it at that. I cannot vote to uphold the director's decision to go forward with this. I believe that the appeal that has come before us should be upheld, and that the request for this minor subdivision be denied.
I want to address a couple of your points. I believe that the condition that he's referring to is actually a recent one, since 2019, I mean, some time in the last three years, didn't we? Yes, please, yeah.
We did update the land use development code to revise the snapshot we asked for, and so it is a newer standard since 2016.
Okay.
I can't remember the last how many votes have been gone on.
Sure.
But it's very recent.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that does take into consideration here. So with the geologist, and it shows the type of water that's available is in these fissures. So it does make sense that even if you get to into a solid fissure, if the replacement rate doesn't keep up with the use rate, it is going to leave over time, and you're going to have to drill a new well and get a new fissure. So I can't deny the right of somebody to subdivide their property when they could very well say, "I know what the water capability is, but I'm willing to truck in water, I'm willing to drill a second well," as long as they understand and know that that's what the condition is. So I like the new technology that, and with the conditions presented, it makes sure that the new properties are not going to be drilling into somebody else's fissure at this point. So I think that's kind of where I distinguish the difference with the things that you have brought up, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bill, did you want to add?
I wanted to make a.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, I do, really. I am very uncomfortable with the technology being taken for certain that there's going to be water there, or that it's going to be sufficient, or that it's going to be long-lasting. So what responsibility does the county have to make sure that there's water present on a particular piece of land?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Brooks, the responsibility we have is to meet what our code says.
David, turn up your mic quite a bit, please.
The responsibility we have is to meet the code that is written. In this particular case, we believe that has been done.
Okay, I just, I agree with Chris in terms of the snapshot in time proviso, and the numbers were very impressive, and the technology was very impressive, but I'm not quite sure I'm comfortable just saying, yes, that's okay. I'm really not.
So, Bill, what part of the presentation, or the hydrologist's presentation, you feel did not meet the standard of proof that is required by code?
Well, code is one thing, and the explanation of the hydrologist was quite another. And he was explaining how the higher up you go in the altitude of the particular location changes significantly the likelihood of water being there. And how he could not say that water will be there, only that this is what the imaging shows at this time.
Oh, I guess I didn't get that at all from that presentation. I still feel that it absolutely meets code, and like I said earlier, they still have to go through all the process. The conditions on the approval specifically say the parameters on which the wells shall be drilled. So I am comfortable upholding David's decision, because I do believe that all of the criteria have been met, and I don't think it's this board's job to predict the future whether some water's going to be available or not. That's going to be the homeowner's responsibility to realize the area that they're buying into, and the fact that the conditions have to be followed.
So the person, the person developing this piece of property needs to tell each and every homeowner that they may have to be bringing water in.
Well, Commissioners, if I may, that's arguably true for every subdivision we do in the county, because we can never predict with certainty that water's going to be there, with the exception of those over the Rastrem Prairie Aquifer. There we know.
Yeah, because we know there's an.
Thank you.
There's a reservoir. Go ahead, Bill, are you, are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. David, you said the code was revised?
Recently, I, we could look up, if you want to take a five-minute recess, I could find the date. It's been within the last three years.
Okay.
And it just changed the way that we require geologists now to look at these things, whereas before, it could be a professional engineer.
Yeah, so we actually made the code more stringent since I, since we started, since this board started in 2019.
Yes.
But even as the code was made more stringent, and even it was only three years ago, the growth in this area has been incredible. Arguably, well, obviously, Idaho is a state. Last year took in, year over year, over 54, I think it's 53,000 people. This area, this county, is one of the fastest-growing, and I don't think that the code necessarily anticipated the level of growth that's occurring. I would also go back and say the wells are diminishing in productivity. So while the EMS technology can pinpoint a fissure, and while that action may conform with code, I would argue that the code does not anticipate future, and it can't, I understand that, because productivity is a point in time, but when that productive capacity of the well, when that test fails to take into consideration the diminishing productivity of the wells in the area, and the fact that some of those wells had to be re-drilled, I cannot support the original decision.
Commissioners, may I add?
Sure.
A few things. You may recall, we have a consultant that's done a work program to address this very issue. I was going to try and make that happen this year, but our consulting money is a little thin. It was going to be a roughly, I think, 11, maybe it was up to $17,000 study that Nisha was planning to do with Welch-Kolmer. And that would actually give us a much better answer than the one we have today of how to ask for a snapshot in time in the code, because I will grant you that what we have today is imperfect. It's more perfect or better than we used to have. But I would caution, and I would ask our legal counsel to weigh in, that you have a standard before you that's not in the code. To me, you have to go with what our code says, whether you like it or not.
I mean, to me, if we're equating code with law, we can't be accusing or denying somebody if they're not following the code that are standard, right? We have to go with the minimum standard, which is the code. We may have higher standards as people, but the minimum standard is the code. If we don't like the code, we change the code.
Now, again, this is where it's more of an attorney's call than a planner's call, but I would caution you that you need to find evidence in what's been presented to you that argues that the code wasn't met.
Would you like me to comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. I think I agree with the comments of Director Callahan. Your decision needs to be constrained by the code as written, not as you may wish it were to be. If the code is deficient in some way, then there's always a chance to revise it later. I especially agree with the last comment David made. If there's a standard that hasn't been met, then you, you know, could deny here, but if the standard has been met, I think you're constrained by the code as written.
So what you're saying is, if we believe, or if I believe, the code is deficient, I'm still bound by the code?
Correct.
I think if we go any further, if we go any further than that, we may not be doing something illegal, but we're certainly doing something extra-legal.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill, can you explain?
Well, you know, to make another step beyond the code, it's true, it's just not there, and the intentions are good, and it would be nice if we had some more, a more updated code, but I think it's extra-legal to, at this point, after hearing my fellow Commissioners deliberate, it would be extra-legal to deny the director's decision.
I think we've said what we need to say. Is there a motion?
I move that we deny Appeal 21-0002, a request by Meadowbrook West wrote association, which would then uphold the director's decision to approve the four-lot subdivision.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
And I'm going to qualify mine. I think the code is deficient. I understand the legal, the legal aspects of it, but I'm not going to wait for the situation to turn dire before the code changes. I'm going to vote nay. Anyway, I'm outvoted. So case number APP 21-0002 is hereby denied in the decision of the director to uphold the appellant, the original appellant, that is to say, the property owner.
Applicant.
Applicant, thank you.
Those APP words.
Right. Is upheld. Thank you, spirited debate.
All right.
Okay, then, so let's move on to the next one, which is case number MSP 21-0006, Dolan's Deal Second Edition, excuse me, a request by Dolan Land Management LLC for preliminary approval of a five-lot major subdivision on 26.29 acres located in the restricted residential zone. Go right ahead, Vlad.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Anko with Cooten County Community Development. As you stated, this is a preliminary request for a major subdivision, five lots. The subject property is located at the intersection of Highway 54 and Highway 41, just south of the city limits of City of Spirit Lake. The property is fairly level, and it's heavily vegetated, with some areas that have been cleared out for potentially a building site. There is currently no access road to the subject property, and the intent will be to construct a new private road, providing access to the newly proposed lots off of Highway 41. The current zoning, as you just stated, Commissioner Filios, is restricted residential with rural to the east and restricted residential to the west. City limits of Spirit Lake are directly to the north. The comp plan designation is border, and typically, areas that are in close proximity to city limits are border comp plan designation with transitional further away from the city limits. The subject property is located within the City of Spirit Lake area of city impact. During the agency comment period, we did solicit comments from City of Spirit Lake. Unfortunately, we did not receive a response. However, during the public hearing before the hearing examiner, the applicant's representative, Mr. Marshall, did express that they have been in contact with the City of Spirit Lake, and that had no intent or desire to annex the subject property. This is the layout of the proposed subdivision. This is actually one of, I believe, three subdivisions. There was the original Dolan's Deal, and then there's, there was Dolan's Deal First Edition. Both of those went through a minor subdivision process, and this is the last phase that consists of five lots, and it requires a public hearing, or it requires a major subdivision process. Lots will be plus-minus five acres in size, meaning the requirements of the Panhandle Health District for the density requirements of one dwelling unit per five acres, being that the property is over the aquifer. And even though it is zoned restricted residential, unless the property has sufficient municipal services like a sewer connection, it's unlikely that it will be subdivided at any point in the future. Water will be provided via individual wells. The property, as I stated, is over the aquifer, so the concerns brought up in the previous request are, in staff's view, is a non-issue. They did submit a statement from the professional geologist stating that there is sufficient water flow, based on their assessment of the well logs in the area. These are some of the photos of the subject property in question, with access directly off of Highway 41. We did solicit comments from all the agencies that are listed here before you. The comments were pretty standard. ITD has already issued a, an access approach permit from 41. The interior road will have to be constructed to the associated highway district standards. The applicant will have to establish a homeowner's association for the maintenance and upkeep of the private road. One of the concerns that you have heard recently on previous projects in this area, and likely across the county, is Lakeland School District submitted a comprehensive letter with their concerns associated with future growth and the need for some level of mitigation, whether it's impact fees or some sort of land dedication. This has been expressed by staff at the public hearing before the hearing examiner. The applicant's representative also testified to that issue, and as you know, currently there is no legal way, or there's no mechanism at a county level that could address or mitigate at either financially or through land dedication, the growth and the need for the necessary facilities or improvements within the school district. So that issue is just something that we want to express to you, and we always solicit comments from the school district, so that at some point in the future, if there is any course of action that will be taken, a consideration can be given based on some recent projects on how to handle this issue. We received two public comments in opposition. I think some of the concerns were originally raised with regard to the possibility of the subject property being rezoned. It has no, there's really no legal basis to deny a subdivision just because somebody is likely to rezone it. Technically, they can submit a rezone application on the parent parcel consisting of 26 acres if they chose to. So the subdivision is not a first step or a mechanism to pursue a rezone. So we find that the concerns raised by the public really have no bearing on this process. We believe that the applicant has met all of the requirements of the land use development code as it relates to major subdivision application, and we believe that the applicant can and will meet the requirements of the agencies through the final plat review. The hearing examiner heard this request on January 6, and subsequently submitted a recommendation of approval. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for Vlad?
I don't have any.
Bill, anything?
No questions.
Leslie?
I think this is an appropriate project. I am happy that they are doing one per five instead of restricted residential, one per 8,200 square feet. I think that this, this is exactly why that rule exists with Panhandle Health, because even if you do hook up to sewer, you still have the incidental use, you still have your roads, which are going to be more road salts and treatments, chlorides, nitrates from just your lawns and incidental use to having a, having a house there. So all these things impact the aquifer. So I, I'm really in favor of a five-lot subdivision rather than how many 8,200 square feet would, would allow if they were hooked up to sewer.
Yeah, and I would have to agree. The 8,250 square feet amounts to five units, five residential units per acre, and that would make absolutely no sense, and I think this effort safeguards the five-acre minimum, so I'm perfectly fine with it. Motion?
Bill, did you have anything to add?
No, I, I have nothing. Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve case number MSP 21-0006, which is Dolan's Deal Second Edition.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. So case number MSP 21-0006, Dolan's Deal Second Edition is hereby approved. Thank you. So that concludes the deliberations segment of our meeting this morning. Moving on to the business segment, Business Community Development Update. Director Callahan?
Commissioner, is the first item on your agenda, the first item on your agenda is the use of recreational vehicles, is that right?
Yes.
I don't have the.
Yeah, it's temporary or intermittent use of an RV.
Yeah.
We worded it that way because that's the current language in the code.
Okay.
Commissioner Duncan wanted to have a discussion about using RVs as homes.
Yeah.
We're prepared for that. I would like to just set the stage, though. We have problems with the lack of definition right now with intermittent use. You may recall, Commissioner Filios, some time ago, we presented a possible code amendment. At that time, it didn't go anywhere. And... And it's still a problem for us because people complain routinely. Craig's here and he can opine as to how frequently that occurs, but it's regularly, that there are concerns that people are living in their RVs and we can't really do much of anything about it because if they are gone for an hour to the grocery store, they argue it's intermittent use. And since we have no definition of it, they win.
Right.
And so that's kind of the context. Though I understand Commissioner Duncan's concern about using these units and allowing them to be used for homes. I would just throw out for discussion purposes, we would have some significant building code issues to deal with because, first of all, you remember the state adopts the code and then we're obligated to follow what the state does with some minimal exception that Pat can explain later when he's available. But we have to be able to justify the exceptions. Here, the building code is very explicit that RVs can't be used as single-family homes for at least four reasons I can think of. They don't have the proper snow loading. They don't have wind loading. They don't have the proper ingress and egress. They don't have proper exiting like you would get in a single-family home. So arguably, they're just not as safe to be used long-term on a regular basis as a single-family home. So that's why we're where we're at today.
So what are you asking of us?
Well, I'm not asking anything.
I asked.
Commissioner Duncan just wanted to have a discussion. I wanted to set the stage for you.
Yeah. So with the current housing situation, my concern is that, depending on what kind of complaints we get, that we're going to be forcing homelessness. Because if people only have the ability to live in their RV, that I want to have that discussion. Now, I understand what state code says, so, you know, there's got to be that balance with that. I would not be in favor of changing intermittent use at this time because to me, that gives an added safeguard of not causing these people to be homeless. Now, if there's another avenue, somebody's got a better idea on how to deal with these things, then I'm willing to hear it. But at this point, I really can't, in good conscience, be telling people, okay, you don't get to live in your RV, the only thing you own because you cannot afford a home here. You know, you don't get to be near family. You don't get to have your job. You don't get to do these things because the code doesn't allow it. And we have had county employees who've sold their homes and live in an RV. And so, I mean, they have jobs. I mean, one of them was here for 20 years and they've since retired. But I guess my concern is we can still deal with it on a case-by-case basis, but I also don't want to set up to encourage homelessness by taking a hard line on some of these things where these people don't have a choice except to live in their RVs.
How severe is this? How many... I mean, can you quantify it?
Craig, can you tell?
Craig, can you help us out, please?
Talk about the complaints you get and what you know about it. I'd be appreciative.
I think there should be one on your desk. I mean, right...
Microphone?
Yeah.
New technology. Been a while since I've been up here. Thank you, Commissioners. Craig Davidson, employee of Community Development Code Enforcement Division. We cannot quantify exactly. We get several complaints all the time. The issue is, the code's well-written for some provisions that we have, allowing people with active building permits to be able to live in it while the active building permits... That's a wonderful benefit to our citizens, to RVs, to a lot, those kinds of things, permanent address. However, the issue of intermittent, as the director stated, is a really critical problem for us. We get complaints all the time about somebody living in the RV. But intermittent use, we don't have it defined in our code exactly what it is. So we defer to Merriam-Webster's dictionary, which says, start, stop, start again, not constant.
Yeah.
Basically, that's it.
Right.
So with where you're going with this, totally understand. Either intermittent has to be clearly defined of a specified time period or we need to eliminate it. And we do have a lot of recreational properties. We've got to take a lot of things into account to open this up for amending the code. But homelessness is... I don't realize... I don't think that that's exactly an issue that we've been posed with at this point in time.
At this point in time. I'm trying to be proactive.
Right. No, I understand that. And the good thing is, is there's several RV rental areas around within the cities that allow full-time RV use to rent a space.
So how do they get around the code, then? If the state code says they...
Well, the building code says you can't use it in a single-family home.
Okay.
An RV park is set up to accommodate these things and that meets law.
But it doesn't accommodate the snow load or the ingress or the egress?
I think what's confusing you is you're aiming for a different target. You're trying to use, it seems to me, the Land Use and Development Code to allow these units as a single-family home, just like we issue building permits for a single-family home. That's where the overlap occurs. Separate that from your mind in your mind for a moment and remember that commercial zoning districts allow people to use RVs and the state law doesn't say you can't go use your RV in a bona fide RV park.
As a single-family home?
It doesn't address that. It just says you can't use it as a single-family home on your dwelling, on your lot that you own in the unincorporated counties since we can't issue a building permit for it.
Right.
But commercial uses are a completely different issue.
Sure.
Oh, Ben wants to add something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Just maybe this be helpful because our code does still mention that a recreational vehicle is meant for recreational purposes.
Sure.
And it shall not be used as a primary dwelling. So whether it's on your own personal property or it's in a recreational vehicle park, the intended use is for recreation purposes and it shall not be used as a primary dwelling. That is where the code... That's what the code says, no matter where you're using the RV. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but...
Craig?
In an RV, taken from the building code perspective, it can't be defined as a dwelling or a building.
Okay, sure.
So that's what the director was going with the...
Okay.
And what are the structures called that a lot of people place over their manufactured homes and their RVs to keep the Ramadas?
Ramadas. Ramadas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So if somebody were to place a Ramada over still an RV?
It's still an RV. It still has to meet the current...
You know, what makes this difficult, and I think Leslie hit on it. Let's sidestep our immediate area here. Even in Silicon Valley, which is, as far as house prices go, it's obviously more expensive than here, there are tech workers earning in excess of $100,000 a year and they're living out of their cars. Look, I don't like this either. I agree with the code. I mean, an RV is not a dwelling. But we do have a situation now. The question is, how severe is it? And are we laying the groundwork for something, you know, more onerous if we allow this? This housing market is not going to go on forever. We may get another year or two out of it, but as it is right now, our prices are so high that some folks are actually going elsewhere. So I'm somewhat at a loss because I understand the argument for people needing a dwelling, but I also understand the argument that that's not what it's intended for. Go ahead, Craig.
And the majority of our complaints originate around two various locations, McGuire Estates and Bananza Ranch.
Well, Banza...
Okay, well, anyhow, you don't want to go there.
Now, where is McGuire? Help me out.
It's not...
Post Falls.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Post Falls?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm still fine with bringing these things up one, you know, one issue at a time, singling them out. I just wanted to bring it up to see if there's anything we could do. It doesn't sound like we can unless we change state law.
I will keep working with the regional task force that Kiki Miller and Hillary and others...
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because affordable housing is a huge issue.
Right.
And that, to me, is the umbrella arching way to deal with this. And we'll try to find some ways to be helpful.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Brad, do you have any ideas, thoughts, suggestions? It's okay. You deal with this on its...
I do. And that's the code for us has three litmus tests. It's gotta be reasonable, feasible, and enforceable.
Okay.
Makes sense? And Legal can probably comment on that as well. But the enforceable aspect of this, the intermittent use, we don't have much teeth in.
Well, and also, I mean, to your point, there is going to be... We are going to hit the peak and start going down again. So if this person or these people are living in their RV because they know they're just waiting, they're just searching the market and soon as that piece or home comes up, they're going to snatch it, how are we going to force them either out of the area or, you know, to become homeless when that intermittent use, maybe a year, you know? So I think we can still examine things because I'm not in favor of people living on property, like instituting a campground or an RV park not, you know...
Not zoned for that.
Not zoned for that. Right. So that is what I think, to me, that this can handle, you know, that this can address. But having... I just want to go, I guess, one by one and make sure that we're not increasing another problem.
And keep in mind, we do take these cases on by complaint basis only.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. So David, you're going to proceed with...
We'll keep working on affordable houses.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Craig.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Okay, then. So our second and final item, I think, on our business segment is an executive... Oh, I'm sorry. It's an executive session under code 2061B. Leslie, do you want to make a...
Sure. And Bill, we'll call you back.
Okay, sounds good.
I move that we enter into executive session under Idaho Code 742061B.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.